Reminder of tonight's meeting, including both video and audio tape. If anyone in the audience is doing so, please inform the board. All right, if you have two minutes, please, sir.
Chairman, I will make the motion that we approve the meeting minutes from October 3rd, 2017, as written.
I will second.
Motion's made in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, the office received the monthly report of the fire chief and cert emergency management for the month ending September 2017.
Thank you, Jimmy.
The office received a copy of a thank you letter that the conservation commission sent to Ms. Ellen Souza at Turkey Hill Brook Farm in Spencer. Ms. Souza provided design plans, time, and plans towards Lucy Stone Park. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
They've done a lot of work down there. Excellent, thank you. The Westmoren Firemen's Association is requesting that the Board of Selectmen consider setting this year's trick-or-treat hours for Tuesday, October 31st, from 5:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. And at 6:30 p.m., their annual parade will form at the corner of Main and North Street en route to Station B on Albany Street.
I have no problems with that. You have a problem with that, sir? All right. Bid award to Seal Coating Inc. for fiberized crack seal.
He was a little bit. No, all three.
All three? All right. And I will entertain a motion on this.
I'll make a motion to have the board sign the approved bid awards for seal coating for the fiberized crack seal.
Second.
Motion's made in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I ask what that was for?
That is the sealing on...hold on. I have this, too.
That's the crack seal.
Yeah.
They put on the roads.
When they go around doing their...
For highway.
Right.
So that's part of the highway budget?
No, no.
And we're early for the 7:15, so, you know, we got 10 minutes. Let's go to the Citizens Action Committee, continue discussion on town-owned properties. We have been looking at them. What a lot of it's boiling down to is they're town-owned, but conservation has a say on it because they are designated as...they're designated as like...
They're conservation.
Yeah, conservation area that can't be touched.
There's one.
She is looking at...hold on. Yeah, I was talking with Dawn today, and she has some broken down that she's been able to cut out. She has others that she still needs additional information on, okay? There isn't a finalized draft yet, but she is beginning the full breakdown. I'm asking you for a little more time, and if you can come in tomorrow, I'll meet with you and Dawn, and she can give you where we're at right now. She could not make it tonight to give you that breakdown.
I can't make this week.
Okay. When you can. There is forward motion on this, and it is something that we're moving towards. Anything that we can get going, we would like to get going because it only means rev for the town, for land, and exactly what you were speaking to when you first came in.
Are you also looking at unknown properties, or are you also looking for...
Yes, trying to determine what...who those are, where those are, how those are. Some of the land actually came from tax title as well, so she has to research that, to say, "When did it go in? When did it become ours? Has it made it through that year period?" Things of that nature. The forward motion is continuing. She's able to do a couple here and there if she goes, but then she runs into an issue where I have to go to another area and get something from them, which is kind of delaying it.
I mean, I'm not...I don't want to just narrow it down, just that one service to that one particular area. You know, the unknowns or town-owned.
No, the entire list is what she's going through.
Yes.
This entire list is what she's going through. And she's getting it broken down as to what we can work on, what we can't work on, and what we need to wait to be able to work on.
But there's other properties that are not in the town of Warren's name that tried to emphasize that.
No, they're... They're a tax title.
Right.
Right. Those...that's under Bob, and any that we can actually go for right now, I don't think we have any at this time. I believe Bob's researching that, but we have some that are in the process.
Which is good, will be.
Bob's? Your guess is as good as mine, sir.
He's away this week.
Yeah, he is away this week. That I know. I can follow up with him next week when he gets back and ask him where he's at with it, but I wanted to get with you on this list because this is what was given to Bob to give to the treasurer.
Do you guys...are you guys the ones that appoint him all the time as tax title custodian?
Yes.
Why?
Nobody else comes in. I have not seen any other person step up and say, "I will take this over" to give us an option. So if there's only one, the choice is always easy.
I never see it advertised, though.
I believe it's been out there.
Just the ones when it was initially first started.
All right. When does it come up again? Do you have it every year, right?
Every year, right? Annual appointment.
All right. So we'll make sure that it's on for the upcoming annual.
Can I ask one comment?
Sure.
The park down...you know, where we're going to get the parking lot sometime?
Yep.
Does anybody notice the spillage of gas or oil or something in that parking lot from the contractors that are storing their stuff there?
I have not been down there.
Yeah.
When was this?
I said it today.
I said it today. Today. Well, I wasn't there today, but I was there like two days ago. I did some measurements.
Yeah, Beck, can you reach out down?
Because otherwise, the towns will get home.
Yep.
It comes time when conservation and males...
Yep. Well, I got looked into. In my comments. That's it.
Mr. Chairman, may I use...
Absolutely.
One thing, Jim, you know, this has been obviously a topic that has been a big, very big concern of yours, and you have pushed the issue.
Which one?
Since the last meeting, Jim, I know Mrs. Lavash and Dawn and the parties involved have probably done more work in the last week and a half than they probably have done in the last five years.
Mm-hmm.
So they realize that this is something that is important, that is going to go forward. And there's been more progress made in the last week and a half than probably a long time.
It's just too bad it took this to get it.
It is, yes, it is. But it is moving forward.
That's good.
Also, one other note on the tax-settled properties. CMRPC also does have a program, and they're willing to assist. So, Dawn, I'm going to put Dawn in touch with them.
All right.
So kind of maybe give her some guidance. I don't know if that's out of our DLTA funds or not, but we can look into that.
Absolutely. Anything that helps the cause?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We've still got five minutes. Let's do Treasury wants and invoices.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we pay payroll warrant number 30 in the amount of $36,210.67, and vendor warrant number 31 in the amount of $95,456.42 dated, excuse me, October 9th, 2017.
I will second both motions.
Motion's made in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve payroll warrant number 32 in the amount of $45,271.28. Thirty-three.
And vendor warrant 33.
Oh, okay. And vendor warrant 33 in the amount of $25,971.24 dated October 16th, 2017.
I will second both motions.
Motion's made in second and all in favor?
Aye. We have two invoices, sir. Fiscali or FY15 invoice number 20, Community Assistance Program, grant number 00762. Pay is Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and the amount is $1,574.23. And we have another invoice, same thing, FY16, no, invoice number 11, Community Assistance Program, grant number 00783. Pay is Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, the amount is $14,776.15.
I will second.
Motion's made in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Still got a couple. New business?
A lot of old business, not new business. All good.
New business?
One thing, Mr. Chairman, you know, now that we're trying to get things going downtown and get wrapped up, I would like the board to send a letter to the Caracas people that are in the Westmoren project that I would like to see him off that piece of property by next Thursday, which is the 26th.
The property on the corner of South and 67?
No, no, no. The 980 parking lot.
Okay. I thought you said Westmoren.
Well, that's the Caracas. That's not the people at a level that is doing our project, but, you know, I think they've been very fortunate that they had that space available.
Yep.
But I think it's time for them to get off so we can start going in there. And I'd like to get, even if it's not completely finished, I would like to be able to get it cleaned up enough that we can use it as parking.
All right. I have no problems with that, sir.
What's your deadline, Mark?
Thursday, the next 26. They should be almost, pretty much wrapped up.
Yeah, they're wrapping up really quick.
They should be able to get the few pieces there and make it like it was before. Nothing...it was really just a couple of small piles of some soil and...
A couple of pieces.
But just asking that. I appreciate if they would get it off by Thursday.
Well, anything that's there, anything that's there, that's there.
I'm saying, in the...
I don't know if they get it in the...
That's all I would just like to get started on. We can't do that till we get them off.
Got you. Thank you for bringing that across the finish line, by the way.
We'll most...we'll address that spilling.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. And I have nothing...one minute. Sit and cool our heels for one minute, you know, they'll get into the discussion.
Yes.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Seven fifteen, Andrew Danforth, discussion on resident-owned mobile home parks.
Yes, Sam?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thanks for letting me in. Actually, I've spoken before the board in the past. You may remember that, some of you. My name's Andrew Danforth. I work for a nonprofit, 501(c)(3). It's called the Cooperative Development Institute. We were formed in 1994, and we work with cooperative businesses throughout New England. We're based in North Hampton. We have 20 employees throughout New England, New York, and New Jersey. I founded seven years ago a program that helps convert mobile home parks into resident-owned cooperatives. And luckily, in Massachusetts, you're only one of about five states that have laws that really promote that. It's been promoted over the years. And in the last seven years, we've converted 17 communities with 2,400 homes. That's actually larger than the population of Warren. We funded $111 million into these programs. The program is a low-equity cooperative. The residents buy in with a nominal $100 to $500 fee, even installments. It's democratically run. I'm here tonight because both of your parks in town are in the process of becoming cooperatives. One is under a purchase-and-sale agreement. The other has been running their park for 10 years under a court order. The owners know where to be found and are going to housing court, basically have it transferred into the residents' hands. That's our agreement. So you have rent control. Rent control is a good thing when you have landlords, when you have bad landlords. You've had landlord difficulties in the past, as you guys know. But for people who own their own community, rent control is difficult. It's a third party controlling their destiny to some degree. So our lenders, which are largely nonprofits, don't allow us to lend into communities that have rent control unless it can be adapted correctly. And that basically means usually an exemption for rent control for resident-owned communities, for cooperatives. We've actually had...we've done this in North Adams, Middleborough, Shirley, Lakeville, Kingston, and West Stockbridge. And Teabody already had a statute that exempted cooperatives. So we've actually kind of given a spiel, longer, shorter, different crews, all around the state over the last seven years. And I've never had a community actually not make that adjustment. Normally, what happens is I come before the board like this. I have members of both boards here. We can have them show their hands or speak if you wish. And normally, what I'm looking for from you is maybe a referral to a town attorney that will spend a couple hours and maybe make a referral to you of how that might be done. You know, in most cases, it's either the rent board can do it or the Board of Selectmen. In at least one case, we had to go to town meeting. We hope not to do that. One of the communities is in agreement, the other's in court, because we hope to do it within the next 60 days or so. That's the basis of it. What can I answer about that from the board?
You're looking for an exemption to rent control for residential-owned communities to be within our bylaws, basically?
Yes, it's changed to your...it's section 10 of your bylaw that meant that mobile home rent control bylaw. And what we would normally do is ask for this, something that says this, if you don't mind. Under definition, "A mobile home park for the purposes of this bylaw shall not include any park that is owned or operated by a corporation or association whose shareholders or members constitute over 51% of the homes in the community." Okay? So it's a majority ownership. It's one share per house, just so you know. So it's not anybody overriding. And, you know, the reason we do this is they have to set a budget every year. They decide on their services, how much they want to pay for plowing or whatever. It's just like a condominium association or your own home. Having a third party...I don't know if you've ever read how rent control is supposed to determine the rent. It's cost plus a return on investment. These guys don't have a return on investment because they don't have to make money themselves. So it makes it very difficult. I'm sorry. Are there any other questions?
No.
No, but it sounds like it could be fully a bylaw change.
Yes.
Which is town meeting approval.
Yep.
But I think we...in my opinion, we'd have to ask council just to find out if something can be done or if it definitely has to go to the annual as a bylaw change. I'm not sure I can answer that. I think we'd have to ask council.
So everyone within the parks is amenable to this? This is what they are looking to do?
The...a majority of each...if you want to put your hands up, I have board members here. I didn't bring all of them.
This is an agreement.
You know? And in order for each park to become truly resident-owned, we have to have this because the lenders won't, I mean, lend upon...you know, rent control is tough. As you know, in the past, it's been tough to get them together. We don't know what rent will come out of it. Anybody lending the whole purchase price, the whole purchase price is going to feel a lot about having a third-party control, you know, what these people want to do. The normal is, just like Mr. Knighty said, is that the attorneys kind of determine what you guys can do.
So what do you do? You figure out a price that the park is valued at?
Actually, one of them is in agreement right now. Okay? The association has signed an agreement on heritage and hillside. Is that right?
Yes, right.
Yeah, sorry. I almost said hillcrest. It would basically function as one community. So they're in an agreement, okay, with the court-appointed receiver. The other will be getting ownership through the court. So both of them are there. You know, we go through a due diligence process of appraisal, of having engineer reviews. We go through a budget. Everything comes down to a monthly rent. There's no real significant investment by individuals. There's no signing, there's no borrowing.
Is there a cost to the town, sir?
No cost to the town. Actually, there's a cost to the town of rent control.
There, yeah.
As we all know, I'm sorry. But it is true. And...but there isn't a cost to the town of having a rent, you know? Only this review of having, you know, whatever you need to change the bylaw. But the resident-owned community does nothing but help the town in a lot of ways. Like, residents will keep, you know, better...you know, if they control their community, they'll keep it better than a landlord will. I mean, both of your communities have ended up in receivership, one twice. That's a record in the state, so that...
Yeah, well, I would suggest that any information you leave with Mrs. Sarah here, and like Dario said, that I think there's a couple of questions that we're going to have to go through town council because we've had issues at, you know, both locations. So, you know, if it's something that's an advantage to the homeowners and it doesn't cost the town anything, I'm all for it, but I think there's a few more questions.
Oh, they're dead...I've been through this eight times.
Then a ten-minute conversation.
Yeah, it's a conversation. Usually attorneys get it pretty quickly. And usually, it's the same. It's compliment...who's your attorneys?
Kate.
Okay, Kate, compliment Kate. I've been through this with them before, so...I don't know if any of the...if any of the residents want to say anything or not, or if you want to move on to your next item, but, you know.
What do you got?
I'm Richard Jelineyson. You know, I'm vice president of the association. You know, we have four executives on the board, and then we have five board members. We represent both parks. We feel that taking this and putting it into resident-owned community, we can control our own rent much better than it was controlled. You know, we were at the mercy of whatever they wanted to charge. You know, at least here, we can shop and take care of our own residents in the town of Warren.
I have no problems with talking to council and seeing what it's going to take to move this forward, if that's what you desire, as long as it has no cost to the town. Figure out what we need to do. Good luck. What do you got?
Through you...just a question. What's the legal instrument that you're going to...so the end game, you're going to have like a corporation and then individually-owned homes? Is that how it works?
It's...we use a Mass 180 nonprofit with members. So it's a Massachusetts corporation with members. Everybody owns the park collectively. It can't be subdivided.
So nobody owns their own trailer, or they're all going to own their trailers?
No, you're planning more to go nuts if I try to subdivide into little places, right? So, yeah, it's true. So, yeah, nobody owns their own land. They already own their own home. Yeah.
Land's fine, but the home is still going to be individually-owned.
Correct. It still won't be individually-owned, yeah.
I'm asking on the board hillside.
Okay. I remember you from...
Yeah.
I've been around. But, yeah, it really doesn't change. It just means that instead of having some landlord that nobody can find out, that they look to themselves and their own board. And we stay with them and help them through this, not only this, but for their length of the mortgage. But I guess, you know, if you refer town council to me, that's kind of...I work with it, and they come back to you.
Mm-hmm. All right? Yep. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next special town meeting, ongoing discussion, review of articles, vote expected for signature on warrants. Number one, see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds to some $15,000 legal expense account and take any relative action thereto.
I have a question. As a finance committee member, my question is, right now, your legal expense is $35,000, so this would bring it up to $50,000. And what is the additional $15,000 that is needed? Is it...
Well, we've had...
Control and association.
We've had different departments have had to use council recently for numerous things. We've had some labor issues and things like that. We've had unexpected costs to that line, expenses to that line, but we've had some anticipated. But it's just, we're being proactive to it. We think that we might need to put a little bit in there just to cover ourselves to get through the rest of the year, based on what we've expended so far, so...
Is it also local construction?
I'm going to try and move up front. I can't hear you.
Yeah. It's a lot of other things that have come up, so...
Do we have motion there? No? See if the town will vote to transfer $200 from the landfill supplies account to landfill operations account, or take any relative action thereto. That's board help, that's just a transfer over.
Just transfer. Yep. Oversight on our budgetary side in the spring.
Do you have the money in there?
Have your money in the account? Yep.
All right. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sum of money to purchase parcel plan located at South Street, being portion map 680, Lot 89. Said portion shown on the sketch plan filed with the town clerk and as referenced as attachment A, to be held for general municipal purposes or take any relative action thereto.
Was that ours? I don't know what to say.
That is you.
That is us. So we have a verbal agreement right now for $5,000 purchase price.
Okay.
I think we're...I think we're dancing around the $12,000 mark. I don't know what it's cost for...we're still trying to close the cost on what is to survey and deed that and closing, so...
Fifteen's a good number.
So fifteen thousand is sort of what we're thinking, and then whatever we don't use on that, come right back to the town in the spring when it's closed down. If I may, Mr. Chair.
You spoke with the landlord?
Yep, sat with him on Monday morning.
Satisfied with the price?
Both, yep. We were both happy with that at this point, so once we know what we're doing here, I'm hoping to talk to council and get a purchase and sale working and see what we need to do to get that. I have...and just for FYI, that is the last portion of the original dump. There's a little section of this, 175 feet by whatever, of the original dump. There's a part that closure of that that's on DeFraser property. So we will own...if we do this, we will own all of our own liabilities at that point. We won't get permission to go on and work on that section of the old dump.
Any questions?
No. I think that conversation, it's proven...
Yep, absolutely. Okay. On to four. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sum of money to increase the landfill remove vegetation and stabilize banking fund to cover the estimated cost of phase-two work at the old west landfill on South Street as required by Mass DEP, or take any action relative thereto. That is you as well. That's the vegetation.
Yeah, I think we're hoping to pass that over and discuss that this winter and come back in the spring.
Okay. Gentlemen?
Yes, pass over.
Pass over.
Still in the war.
Yep, still be on the war, but we pass over. Okay. Five, see if the town will vote to appropriate $31,500 from the Sewer Enterprise retained earnings account to conduct a copper assessment study and any costs related or incidental thereto to comply with EPA consent order docket number CWA-01-17-04, or take any action relative thereto. Anybody from Sewer?
Yeah. Mr. Molson's here.
You're up, sir. The 31, five?
Excuse me, I can't hear you.
Not a problem, sir.
Been in the city too long.
The 31,500 for the copper assessment study?
Right, yeah.
Can you just speak to that a little bit, sir? Can you just speak to that a little bit, sir?
Yeah, that's more about, we could've paid Ty and Bond for the, you know, do the engineering work, and EPA wants us to bring our copper down to 10, you know. We're running basically roughly around 25, 27, 28, but they don't like those figures.
Okay.
They want us to bring it down. EPA is mandating it, actually.
Okay, and this is coming from the Sewer Enterprise retained earnings account? So you're not looking to raise an appropriate, you're looking to take it from your enterprise account?
No, no. We're just transferring the money.
Moving it over, okay. Gentlemen?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Thank you very much. You're on again, so hold on. To see if the town will vote to transfer $2,202.95 from the Sewer retained earnings account to pay valid distribution for a prior year's bill, or take any action relative thereto. My only thing, I get it, you do understand it's a nine-tenths vote on anything for last year?
Yeah.
Okay. Gentlemen?
Can you just go over what the bill is?
Can you go over what the bill is?
What was it for?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a special lubricants we have to have down at the plant, you know.
Okay, and it was a prior year's bill, it was just overlooked, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, sir.
Can I say?
All right, it's nine-tenths vote, and you're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow the sum of $4,000 to cover the cost of establishing a two-way radio service with new high-frequency coordination number and call sign and associated or related costs per FCC regulations, or take any action relative thereto. That's for Tom.
My understanding is that you could give back to our radio or signal right now and keep it going?
Don't forget, no. Don't shoot them, too many holes.
And did you give back to us about potentially being in penalties? Why, if we don't, did you mention that to us last week?
Yeah, I'm not that bad.
I don't know. I'm waiting for a thing on this.
We're not gonna get dinged.
Yeah, if we're gonna start getting hit with penalties, I think we need to react to it now and then just bite the bullet and have them changed over.
I have no problems having it on there, and he can pull it if he needs to. He can pass it over like the vegetation.
I would think, gentlemen, that, like you say, if it's something that we have to do, let's address it now, because we're either gonna address it in November or we're gonna address it in May. So, I know, this sum right here is not something that's, I think, is a controversy, but I would actually nail down Tom to sit here and say that it's something that, as long as we're proactive and they realize that it's up and coming, if we can do it, you may, otherwise, I don't have really an issue with the vote.
What do you got?
Question, Tom's not even gonna answer, I guess, but how long have we known about this? I mean, it's an FCC license regulation. If your license expires, you should be knowing your license is expiring and it's time to act upon it. Seems like something we could've covered in the budget.
Yeah.
We just heard about it personally just a couple of weeks ago, but it's not something that came up for discussion.
In my opinion, we can think about it for a while, and now that very, very imposed penalties has become an action item, you know, so.
I think they're very, I'll say, lenient, with smaller towns on things like this. You know, we were allowed to have paramedic coverage, and we only had two paramedics in town, we could have 12-hour and 12-hour coverage because we're a smaller town. So a lot of state organizations will be like, okay, and then eventually, they'll say, you have to do this.
Yeah, I understand that. It's something we could've been planning for a while.
Yeah, I got you. I got you, absolutely.
Too many times.
To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow the sum of $117.41 to pay SINTAS for a prior year's bill, or take any action relative thereto. That's highway, nine-tenths.
It's for somebody's uniform, sir, something, somebody who's got to pay the bill, and this is where it comes down to pay $117.41.
Comes to you guys?
It's gonna come to us eventually, but we haven't seen that.
Nobody's come to you on any of these?
Not on the highway.
All right.
No, and Tom, he did come into the last meeting that we had first, and he came in today, and his young baby is sick. That's the only reason that Tom is not here. He did come into the first meeting when we asked people to, he came in, addressed it, and if we were adamant about doing it, but my personal opinion, if the baby's sick, that's real. So, I think that I think we need an answer on if we can wait till May, if that's something that we have to do, let's do it, and this bill is, it's gotta be paid.
Yep. We were right, $117 bucks, isn't it? All right. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate $2,681 to increase to supplement the appropriation for the Quabog Regional School District's fiscal year 2018 operating assessment, as voted by the town's Article 5 of the May 2, 2017 Annual Town Meeting, to reflect an increase in the town's minimum local contribution following the distribution of state aid funding to the regional school district for fiscal year 2018, as voted by the town on Article 5 of the May 2, 2017 Annual Town Meeting, or take any action relative thereto. That's his cue. Right on time. You couldn't have timed that any better. All right, I just read it.
Okay.
Could you say the assessment?
So I talked to the Westbrook Field Selectmen earlier today, they're not doing a special town meeting, so if we put this on the Warren Town Meeting, I think it would put Westbrookfield in a precarious situation. It's the last thing that I want to do, so.
This is on the assessment, not on the...
That, that...
Oh, not the PA system. Not the PA, this is the assessment.
The assessment.
This is the assessment.
Yeah, that's...
Yep.
Yeah, that's routine.
Gotcha.
Governor can get the budget approved.
Yes. And actually, you know what, while we're here, so I can let you go?
Yeah.
I'm gonna jump to 11, gentlemen. You okay with that?
Yeah. 11. Well, I just, I was like...
Never mind. Yeah, 11.
Oh, yeah, that's Quabog as well. I saw treasure.
Yeah, but it's, our money is at the, that's our transportation.
Right.
Our pro-rata share.
Yeah.
That's routine, we do it every year.
Okay, see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow the sum of $17,700 to purchase intercom system, including equipment, material, and programming costs, and any related or incidental costs for the Quabog Regional Middle High School, or take any action relative thereto.
So this is what I was, thought I was speaking on. The PA system at the high school is not working well. It's working, it sounds like Charlie Brown's teacher when we use it. You can hear, but it's not clear, somewhat of a safety issue. It has been on our capital plan list for the past five years, but as I said, I talked to Westbrookfield, they're not going to do a special town meeting, so I don't want to ruffle the feathers, if you will.
So you'll be passing this one over?
I would say that'd be my recommendation.
Anything on the capital plan?
Yeah, Ash is aware of it. It's been on there for several years. In fact, I think the PA system at all three schools is on the capital.
In the meantime, being in the Pathfinder system, is there a way of reaching out to them to see if they can get the kids out here and maybe see if they can get something going with it?
So, the quotes that we received, I have three quotes. One is $19,000, the other one, it ranges up to $59,000. The reason that I bring that up is, I think it's a complex unit. I don't know if we want kids, not that the students aren't qualified, but I think we're looking at an antiquated system, and it may be beyond their skills. But I can absolutely reach out.
I'll tell you, if you got, like, if some of the rooms, the speaker isn't working, you know, get them to wire that, just as a patch over, I don't know, just offering a suggestion.
Absolutely.
Use what we got.
Yeah.
I have a question. The three quotes that you received, which one were you going with?
The lowest one.
Which was, well, the $17,000 went to 23, they said.
Yes, yeah. So they changed their quote, so the lowest now is like $19,000. I think you were at the meeting last night.
$19,860, so you're going with that one.
Well, we're not going with any of them, because we're gonna pass it over.
So it's gonna have to go out again for quotations.
Exactly. It's gonna be outdated.
Okay, my other question, if you're with the $17,700, would Warren only pay 60% of the amount?
Correct.
Okay, so why on the article did it say $17,700?
So it would've been 60%.
60% of that, roughly 60%.
We would've had to...
Would've made it a motion.
And identify the funding source.
Yeah.
But it is important for the next meeting, that it's worded correctly.
Absolutely.
I have one other question. Originally, you had put down an estimate of $45,000 to replace the PA system.
So the quote that we received, that is now $59,000, a couple of years ago, that was $45,000. That's Valley Communications. They are very familiar with the building, they've done a lot of work in the past, so when we put the, on the capital plan, the estimate of $45,000, that was based on a quote a couple of years ago from Valley Communications.
Hindsight it lowered, so it's a good thing.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd also like to add, I know it was brought up in the last meeting, Brett, that one of the reasons was $45,000, that was brand new everything, and the bid that you had accepted at the 17 was, like you said, not running all the wires, using it, it was more or less replaced what had to be replaced and used what you could.
Every penny counts, and we're trying to be as fiscally responsible as possible.
The wire's not gonna wear out, maybe the equipment and the speakers, but like you say, labor incentives, that's not running at all, and that's where your costs exist.
Yeah.
You know, that's the route to go.
Yeah.
But that's where the difference in the price was.
Thanks, Mr. President. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, back to 10, to see if the town will vote to reduce fiscal year 18 Quabog Regional School District assessment by $97,999, due to a credit for the fiscal year 17 regional school transportation costs allocated to the district following receipt of supplemental state aid funding, as previously voted by the town on an Article 5 of the May 10, 2016 Annual Town Meeting, or take any action relative thereto. That's just the transportation fees every year.
That's the reimbursement we're receiving for the pro-rata share. They bunched it a lower level than they actually gave them, so that comes back to us in Westbrookfield, that's the same, but you have to report you back.
And then Article 12, the two non-binding questions, asking if the town wishes to allow retail sale of recreational marijuana in the village zoning district, and the other non-binding question, does the town wish to allow the processing and manufacturing of recreational marijuana? They're two separate questions. One is for the distribution, or the shops, one is for the cultivation and processing of it rights, and these are both non-binding at this time, and then we'll have open meetings and move forward. And that's all we got.
Planning a sponsoring, or are we sponsoring this?
Planning to sponsor this.
Maybe.
Having said that, I'll...
Tell them to send the warrants for the special time meeting date on Thursday, November 2, 2018.
Question 32, in all favor?
Aye.
Sir?
Just a question, 'cause I missed it. Article 9, what was the assessment number? All I had was question marks on the one, the copy I have.
$2,681. On 9, yep.
Thank you.
So actually, it's one of the big-ticket items?
Yep.
Kind of. Pass over that.
Sir?
Yeah, I wanted to bring up about the barking dogs at 48 Liberty Street and how I wanted a hearing.
All right, I sat in a meeting with yourself, your wife, and the animal control officer, at which time, there was days after days after days of video footage of nighttime barking of the dogs. The animal control officer has moved on this, and the animal control officer has gotten assurance that the barking will cease, and what I'm gonna ask is that you allow the animal control officer to do this. The issue is the barking, the barking has ceased. Has there been any barking since?
Yes.
Over the weekend, yes.
This is a direct neighbor that abuts, we have a fence line that abuts the 48 Liberty Street.
Okay.
This is 38 Liberty Street, this gentleman is living next door at 38, I'm sorry, 38 Elm Street, rather, and his fence abuts the property, and he can attest to what happened on Friday, 13th. After the order was given not to bark, and it wasn't gonna happen anymore, see, this has been going on for 11 years, and we've been bullied for 11 years by this person and who owns this home, and it's coming to a stop. We're done. This is gonna, we want a hearing, we want a revocation of the kennel license.
Okay, hold on. Sir?
Yes. I had heard them past that time, I think it was Friday at about 10:30, 11, I'd heard the dogs. I have not been around for 11 years, so I don't know all of this.
That's fine.
Just for about five years, I've been around, and it is a constant thing.
Okay, and you said Friday, did you record it?
I believe I did, yes. I've called the police and reported it before.
Okay, before, but did you report it on Friday? Because otherwise, it's just you saying that you heard it, instead of having...
Sydney, considering that she said that she checked with dispatch and there were no calls.
Okay. Sydney was in today, Becky just told me, she said that she had checked with dispatch and there were no calls. Okay. So having, wait.
That's from Sydney.
All right. I haven't read this yet, I'm gonna read this aloud. Sir?
I just wanna make one comment, that since we were contacted by animal control, the dogs have been put in the house at 10 o'clock every night and locked into the house.
Okay.
So I don't know whose dogs they're hearing, but...
Okay. Well, the last thing I wanna do is get into a neighbor dispute, 'cause nobody ever wins. Nobody ever wins. But hold on, let me read this. There's been an ongoing issue at the residence 48 Liberty Street with nuisance barking slash disturbing the peace. Two German Shepherd dogs that are housed outdoors have been barking during quiet hours in Warren, which is 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM. Spoke with the resident on 10, 12, 17, and addressed this issue. She then called dispatch, spoke with an officer regarding the town bylaws, regarding the nuisance barking, disturbing the peace. Neither I nor dispatch have received any calls reporting barking since then, as of 10, 17, 17. All of the dogs I have seen there are in excellent condition, they are clean, they are also all up to date on rabies vaccinations. Kennel inspections will start again this December 2017, and she will be following up then. As long as the nuisance barking is resolved, I have no further business with that resident until the yearly inspection. If there is an issue, and trust me, I have your letters, I have the DVDs. This board does not get into neighbor disputes, this board absolutely does get into nuisance disputes, okay? You gotta call dispatch if something is going on between those hours. If there was something going on, I'll, can you double-check with dispatch, just double-check with them in the morning, just to make 100% sure? If there is something, then I will reach out to you personally, and we will get something going.
But you have to make sure that the calls go through the police.
Right, it's gotta go through dispatch.
Not to the animal control officer.
Well, see, that's the problem. We're told from the police many times not to call them to get in touch with the dog officer, so we were solely going through the dog officer.
Gotcha, I'll speak with dispatch.
This gentleman has lived here for five years and I, there, there's another neighbor that we have that is hearing these dogs too. So, it, it's not just a couple of people. We also spoke to an ex-dog officer in Spencer who knows all the laws and everything. This dog, this kennel license shouldn't even be here. This was actually all Mark Richards' fault and put in place back in two thousand eight when my wife went to your home, Mark, you wouldn't do anything about it. You know, this is just absolutely ridiculous.
I got you, but...
I wanna hear it.
I don't wanna get in, I don't wanna get into what he said, she said.
I think I have to be very careful. This is not an agenda item.
Right, and we are going past the time right now?
So, can we put it on the agenda for next week then?
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Next week, I'm not sure for me next week, but I, I think it's just put on the agenda. I think we might not get Sydney. I would encourage any residents to go through dispatch with a call from the law.
One second, I'll get right to it.
I promise. Um, we've had a change in animal control officers. I would encourage they go through dispatch, then it's a law and call, we can trace it back to that.
Right, and I'll speak to the chief and have him speak to dispatch to make sure that you are no longer given information to reach directly out to the animal control because we do need it logged. We do need that it has come in. Go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
No, it's just the best bet is to call to dispatch because then it's logged. Calling the animal control direct is a he-said, she-said type of thing.
What about an email to the dog officer? There's many emails to the dog officer and a, and a response from the dog officer acknowledging it.
We can have all that going because you're going on the agenda. So, have all of that information and... Yeah, and kind of, we're gonna need to contact all parties, so if you could reach out to Becky in the morning with all parties so that we can make sure they're reached out to.
So, this is just to discuss?
This is just to discuss at this time, okay?
So, you'll get to me with your contact info?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Excellent. We good?
Yep.
Thank you.
The dog officer also told me that the hours were between ten eight, ten PM and six AM and when I did ask what by law that was, she couldn't tell me.
Okay.
It's a state law.
We'll have...
It's not, it's not a town law, it's a state law.
Okay, and what are the hours, chief?
Uh, it's ten, it was ten to seven, not ten to six.
Oh, she told me ten to six.
But you know what, let's get some clarity on that so that everybody's on the same page.
That's why we don't have an individual by law.
Right, we don't have an individual, though, we, we go back to the state like the chief stated, so ten to seven, if that's what it is, that's what it is.
Okay, so we'll have that for you.
And obviously you'll be here.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? Okay. Anyone else? Sir?
Mr. Gager?
Yes, sir.
Last meeting, I was accused of shouting and expletive.
Yes, sir.
And I would like to know who accused me.
That would be me.
Just you. You said several people contacted you.
I will have the person who, um, concurred that with me. Actually, there's a few people in this room and I'm not gonna name names.
Okay.
But, sir, watch the tape. I don't wanna get into this.
I have.
And you know what you did? Stop it. Stop it, we're done.
No, I will not stop. I will not stop.
I watched the tape.
Okay, great.
There's nothing...
Moving on.
No, are you, are you standing by your statement?
Yes.
It's natural.
Michelle, did you hear him?
Yes.
It's on the tape.
Bruce, did you hear him?
I did.
And I found it in my nightgown, it was yours.
There's three people.
Heard me?
No, we're done. We're done with this, sir. Yes, we are. Okay, anyone else?
It's not on the tape.
Sir?
I know, I thought we were gonna bring up, I was gonna address the board tonight about full-time position. Is that supposed to be under comments and concerns or...
Uh, we couldn't get it on the agenda because it wasn't given to us in enough time to get it on there. I will have you on the next one, but you did send the email. You guys got the email regarding that?
I, I had a meeting with the chief this morning.
Okay, you got the email, sir? Regarding the full-time position? In the academy, okay. We will have you on it. I'd like to have the meeting next week if we could so that we don't have to go into Halloween.
And just so the board's aware, the time is really up.
Yep. Anything else, anyone else? Sir?
Was it put on the agenda about parks? Becky, did we put it on?
No, you came in yesterday.
What we talked about, did you put it on as an agenda item or should I bring?
For today?
Yes.
No, we were already posted.
Okay, so as a comment and concern?
Yes, sir.
Um, we had a finance committee meeting last week and Mr. La Bash was present at that point. Um, he had asked for extra funding for, um, wood chips to be put under the PlayStation at Cutler Park, which has been done. Um, but two of the, uh, board members then asked, well, were the other parks updated as well? And his comment was that they were grandfathered and it was something we didn't need to worry about. But the reason we gave him the wood chips in the first place was because he said it was a state mandate that those chips be changed out on a three-year basis.
So, one of my board members said, well, we're concerned about the liability issue should a child get hurt because we haven't upgraded those parks.
So, I'm just bringing it to your attention that I would like to go forward with that and make sure that you can ask, ask the parks as well for that update because I think we do have a liability issue there. If a child was to get hurt because they're not upgraded and there is in fact a state mandate in place, which he said that was the reason he needed the chips, then it seems like all the parks should be maintained the same way. Becky, can we call and block the next one, too? Thank you. Just so that we're, you know, keeping kids safe.
All right, anyone else? Next meeting is going to be on the twenty-fourth? Yeah, seven PM. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion's being seconded, all in favor? Ayes.